Can I fold it?
Here.
Before we begin our board meeting tonight, I am surprised but delighted to introduce you to Rachel Tassler, U West Elementary Principal, who you will approve later this meeting. I did not know she planned to attend, so welcome, Rachel.
Thank you.
I move the board approve the minutes of the April 15, 2019 special meeting, April 22, 2019 regular board of education meeting, April 30, 2019 special meeting, financial report for April 2019, consideration of current bills, checks number 9918 through 10018 in the amount of $255,750.77. ECH is number 181901196 through 181901353 in the amount of $1,491,787.75. And one way transfer in the amount of $15,527.41 for a total of
Let's take it by Danny here. And roll call.
Wait, Andy, can I ask what...
Yes, you may.
Can I? I didn't know if we could.
Yes, you can.
Okay, when I was reading through the board bills, I've got three questions. First, what was the Peace Lutheran Script thing? There was something in there about temps. It said something about Peace Lutheran Script?
Mary, I'm taking a guess at this point because I saw that as well, but I think it was something to do with PBIS and rewards given out, but can you verify that?
Oh, I was just curious. Okay, and then I have three questions. In my spare time, I read the board bills. I thought we didn't have a foster grandparent program anymore.
What we have is an informal program with, it's not truly a foster grandparent program. We have some volunteers who are kind of grandfathered in, and so they aren't able to submit some mileage and then some food reimbursement expenses.
Okay.
Recognizing that this is the sunset to that as well.
And so that's just at like one or two of the schools then, right? Okay. And then the third question, and I've asked this question before, is there any way that we can find out who's getting credit reimbursement in the administrative? Because I see there was another credit reimbursement for delivering education.
Well, every administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, has that option if you take credits to have them reimbursed, but the rates are different.
Yeah, and we also prior approval form, so administrators submit to district administrator their intention, and then, in this case, Julie would approve those for reimbursement, and then they have to have proof of completion and satisfactory grade.
Okay. And do the teachers have that option?
No. But they move up according, they can earn credits and then move up on the pay scale accordingly.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, and Tim, are you going to send us an email or something on that first question?
Peace Lutheran Script.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for those questions, Mary. Now we'll go on to any other questions or comments? And roll call.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noldy?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Tim, is there any public... nobody signed in, I assume?
No.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
On May 7, the middle school hosted open house, and on May 9, all of the district elementary schools. The annual Idol competition was on May 5 in the high school long theater. The high school scholarship ceremony is on the long theater and begins at 6:30 PM. Conto Volce is beginning fundraising activities for their vocal jazz trip to New York next spring. varsity golf sectionals are tomorrow at New Richmond Golf Club, and several other teams from our conference are competing along with ours. Softball sectionals is also tonight, excuse me, at the Marshfield Country Club. Our team finished second in conference with a 10-2 record this year. Tonight, the varsity baseball regional game is at Cretz Park at 5:00 PM, and they also finished in second this year. The girls soccer team plays the regional game tonight at Marshfield at 5:00. The skate track tournament is this Friday at UW Lacrosse. Graduation is this Sunday at 2:00 PM in the high school fieldhouse. The annual National Honor Society banquet took place on May 19 at North Star Plains. 8th grade graduation is next Thursday, June 6, and the next day is the last day of school. And the following one-day summer school programs begin. So I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve as a student representative this year and voice some of the concerns and activities of the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you sing in the Idol competition?
I did not.
I wouldn't have.
If I could, I would like to recognize me then as National Honor Society president next year as well.
Okay, we'll move on to new business.
I move the board approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on May 19, 2019.
Second. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Passes, and then we'll go on to facilities and moving update.
So I just want to give you a few high points and then open it up for some question and answer. I'll do the best I can on the spot, but we have a lot going on this summer, so I want you to all feel comfortable with where we're at and what is happening, or if you have any concerns about not something happening. As you know, all the trees are gone on the south side of the middle school. We get bids in that you'll see later tonight for the retaining out, and then we just need to fill it in from there and plant some grass seeds, so we're moving along good on that. The fence that goes around there is part of the safety grant from last year, so that's already been in the works. We're just waiting for that to fall into its time, timeframe to be done. The early childhood area that's out there with the fence, we've determined that we don't need that anymore, so we will remove that fencing at this point and make even more playground space for the 4 through 7 kids. All the furniture is here. It's being stored at Carl's Warehouse. It's a lot of furniture. We've been piecing some of it out as we go through the middle school, and we'll have all of middle school stuff there this week. I should say 95% of it this week. The custodial staff and housekeeping staff has been moving through the first and second floors of the three-story doing what they typically do in the summer during the school year to relieve some of the stress of the moving. So the hopes is the first week of no students in the buildings, the teachers will have everything packed up that belongs to them. The second week, we will have fourth and fifth moved to the middle school. So not that it will be done by any means, but the intent is for the bulk of the work at the middle school to be done by the second or third week in July, sorry, third or fourth week in July. Sorry, June. Then that really leaves us about a six-week window to focus on getting three elementaries consolidated for K3. That's a pretty tight window, but we have, like I said, all the furniture's here. I think I have all my desks in a row as best I can. Obviously, will be some unforeseen things pop up, but I feel fairly confident that we got a good plan and got the right people in line to do the work. And it's going to be hectic and fun, but we'll get there. So I'm sure I missed a few highlights, but can keep them on straight right now, so. Open it up for questions.
So middle school teachers will be able to organize all their stuff, will be able to organize their room by the fourth week, June?
That is the plan for the majority, yes.
And what about elementary teachers? When will their stuff be in there at least?
So we need to coordinate the removal of all the furniture into the containers we go to Africa, get the summer cleaning done, and the new furniture. And so I'm thinking that's going to be closer to the first week in August because our open house is like the 13th, 14th timeframe. So as we go through that process and get anything available to them, we'll communicate that and let them in there as much as we can, as soon as we can.
Are we doing all the open houses at the same time, or are we scheduling them if somebody has kids in different rooms?
I don't think elementary are at the same time, but different from middle. Amy, is that correct?
Different.
So that they have different needs.
Okay, so we're donating to Africa. Who's paying the shipping?
I forget the name of the organization. It's Helping Hands that coordinates all this, and they go on missions over there, and they locate the needs, and then they come back here and locate the resources, and then they do a fundraising effort to pay for the...
Okay, so the shipping is not more than the cost of the whole desk?
I would think not. That that don't cost us.
Right, I was just curious.
Yeah. I can ask them more this summer when they're here loading. And yeah, they bring in, I think they had like six people last time, so they do a fair amount of work and everything. It's a pretty good program.
Jake, I got a forgotten project.
Yep.
Where do we stand on the scoreboard in the fieldhouse?
The installers double book themselves. So...
So they won't be installed for renovation?
Ah, no.
Okay.
Do we have any luck with real playground states or working up some maintenance?
Yep. So there's a company that the city uses for their long stretches of curving work, and I got a price from them for $7,500 to do the curb at East, which will be north of the, north side of the building, but still south of the current playground, and we'll fill that in to do grass there as well. West, we're good, and north, not ideal, but it's, I think it's, but the way it is, as we go through this next year, I'm sure we'll see some equipment that isn't needed, or we need more, so we may make some modifications at all three locations after next year, but we'll see with the numbers in that, in that age range if we have the right equipment or not.
Okay, so we didn't actually buy any playground equipment yet?
Not, not for the three elementaries. We are going to for the middle school because there's nothing there right now.
And you told us before that we couldn't move stuff in, and we get nobody to ensure that potentially?
It gets expensive to do that because someone has to take on that liability. There is a couple playground equipment manufacturers slash installers that have been in contact with them, and they come and look at that. I'll definitely have that as an option.
Okay. Anything else?
What about the middle school? I know you've been working hard on that, and we're close to being finished. Are we going to be able to maybe have a committee of the whole meeting next month there, where we can walk through it and tour for the facility?
It's fine by me. I just find it very awkward.
They would love to have you.
So that would be June. Is there a presentation placed? Because I know Jeff Nudel's on for STEAM and might be...
We could have a meeting in the IMC.
And then we could have a tour, add that to the agenda? Is that okay?
True.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
I'll add it to your board calendar.
Thank you.
Better send a statement. Okay, anything else? And then we'll move on to board action items. We're going to the board of education structure. And there is a motion there. Somebody would like to make it?
I move the board eliminate the subcommittee's policy and operation effective April 22, 2019, and discontinue chairperson Fay, and continue with the committee of the whole slash regular board meetings held monthly.
Okay, any discussion, questions? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What about the instructional committee?
It's eliminated.
Right, but that doesn't say that. It says policy and operation.
Oh, wait, there, no, that was eliminated a year ago.
Was it?
When policy committee came in.
Right.
So it wasn't.
We haven't had an instructional committee since I've been here.
We had one.
It's over three or four years ago, five years ago.
We had one with Brian.
Yeah, we had one with Brian. We had instructional committee. Jenny was the chair.
We talked about it. I think there was like, what, one meeting?
We had one a month. We had three meetings a month, one with instruction, one with operation.
That was, that was with Brian, wasn't it?
And then Colleen switched us to two meetings a month.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we never formally gathered the...
I think it was a policy committee, not the instructional.
Right.
But what we did all commit to is if the need arises, we can form an ad hoc committee so that we have board representation and input, you know, as we go.
So this motion is saying we're eliminating the subcommittee? Okay. I think it's covered.
Last committee on instruction was me, second, and those are so.
Yeah, so you want to fix the motion, we should really be eliminating that, but I don't think I've ever made one official policy committee in my business.
I take the motion. I'm willing to assault, so I'll just leave it at that. This one's already passed, though. Okay, we'll go on to purchasing supplies for the 2019-20 school year.
I move the board authorize administration to begin purchasing supplies for the 2019-20 school year.
Danny and Jessica. And any comments, questions?
What kind of supplies are they, are they talking like construction paper, or toner, or?
Mary, really, the intent of the motion is we, I haven't presented even a preliminary budget at this point, and we're opening up requisitions for next year's start of the school year, whatever that might be. It might be workbooks, it might, you know, could be anything.
So it's the usual beginning, okay.
Okay, and any questions, comments? I guess we need a roll call for that.
Noldy?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Andy, I'm sorry, Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to salary structure and support staff.
I move the board approve the teacher salary schedule as presented.
Second.
Tim, how much increase did we end up with per step?
We haven't changed the, what we did on the, if you look at the, if you open that up and you look at it, the first step had, or the first level had five steps in the previous schedule, and so we've eliminated the first two runs in the first level.
Okay.
I think that affected, Julie, do you remember, was it 11 teachers? I'd have to verify that number. Overall, the average increase, I mean, the cost of it is just under 2.5%. If everybody advances. And we won't know if people advance until all the PDs in May.
We felt strongly about getting that starting range closer to 40 to be competitive, more competitive.
Okay. Any other questions? And roll call then.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noldy?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
Andy, before we take action or we do the next motion?
Yep.
I made an error, and the 2.4 should be rounded, I mean, it should not be rounded, and that's not a fault. It should be a 2.42%, is what the Department of Revenue is saying for contracts being, contracts, employment agreements that would go beginning July 1 of this year. And that's, that's what my recommendation was of the committee of the whole.
2.42.
2.42, yes.
Okay. Did somebody like to make that one?
I move the board approve the consumer price index increase for support staff of 2.42% for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. Mike and Jessica. And any questions or comments on that? Roll call there.
Danny Pyatt?
Red use.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Ginny Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noldy?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
If the committee of the whole meeting, Tim, the minutes got, you have 2.4 in there, too.
It just says 2.4 in the minutes. And again, I must have failed to, if you go in the Department of Revenue, that's where I'm getting the information from.
I can correct the minutes.
If you look at the Department of Revenue's website, they're listing 2.42%, you know, the consumer price index for agreements beginning July 1.
Yeah.
And I recall you saying that after the 2.4.
We'll just let Bobby correct those minutes, I suppose.
But this is where the action is anyway, so.
Yeah, and as long as Tim took the time to explain it to us ahead of time, and the motion was made to the proper numbers, it should be...
Okay, okay. We'll go on to the CISA VI contracts.
I move the board approve the CISA VI contract as presented.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments on that?
This is for our writers.
This is for 4K. It is for ELA High School, and it's for all of the K3 elementaries and middle school, so district level, which is a difference from last year. We didn't have 4K included or high school included in that.
I think JD is asking, is this just for the writing portion, or is this also reading?
There's pieces of reading in there because you have to continue it, but it's mainly the writing. It's also a new teacher orientation, which is in there, so that's been an area that we've had concerns with is induction, so there's an induction process. There's also components that are administrative support as well as far as training on how they can support their teachers and monitoring limitation for readers and writers workshop. So there's quite a bit more in there than there was last year.
What's the total value of all that added together?
16.
It's about 136.
Because each, each one is different. Each school has different component to it. Then you have the 4K and everything, so they didn't do a gross one on there. You need to add them up. Each one's running about 15, 20.
Are you adding them up? It's almost 36.
And the reason why we didn't add them up was because they're all being paid out of different grant funds. So none of them are being paid out of your general fund, or out of our general fund. It's in accordance with our titles, so there's four different titles, and then our AGR, so our achievement gap reduction. And this is all in line with how those grants are laid out to be used by the federal and state government.
Awesome. General fund, let's vote.
None of that's going under the general fund.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader? Yes. Ginny Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noldy?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
I'm going to e, official depository, e, for motion.
I move the board adopt Associated Bank as an official depository for the unified school issue plan.
Danny and Jessica. And the administrator kind of temp there. It's all operational checking. Our operational checking account is going to be, again, even filed with Associated Bank.
Effective June 17, then?
Or is it effective right now, Tim?
It's effective, the transaction is finalized on the 17.
Does that mean it's going to be effective? Do we need to hand any to all?
I'd like to amend the motion to re, I move the board adopt Associated Bank as an official depository for the unified school issue of Antigo effective June 17, 2019.
And, okay. So we have to vote on the amendment first, but, okay. Any questions on that? All those in favor, if you may.
Aye.
Any questions on the motion as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to 4K agreements.
I move the board approve the 4K agreements with All Saints and Head Start as presented.
I'll send you that.
Okay, any questions or comments? So Peace has no 4K?
No, they do, but I think it's not.
Not our program.
But St. John's is integrated to our, right, type stuff?
Yes, they pay for the teacher, but use our curriculum, and she comes over for professional development opportunities, works with our staff.
So we'll be implementing equitable programming throughout all of the programs regardless of the site this year, which is different than in the past.
Except Peace, okay.
Right, because they're not our program.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this one on to Melchons.
For motion. I move the board approve the following school prices for the 2019-2020 school year. Half pints of gray day, 1% white, 24 cents. Gray day skim white, 23 cents. Gray day skim tablet, 25 cents. Flipping out bowls of gray day skim, 81 cents. Gray day 1% chocolate, 81 cents. Additional dairy items, 5 pounds of yogurt, $6.06. 5 pounds of cottage cheese, $9.85. And 1 gallon gray day white skim is $3.65.
Second. That was Danny and Jessica. Any questions or comments?
Do we sell a lot more chocolate milk or white yogurt?
I guess not, they're the answer, they're for us.
Any answer to that?
I will.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't know, I never...
I don't know, I never like chocolate milk, I always have white.
Okay, then it's white. Remember where Charleston milk comes from, chocolate.
Okay, any other questions? Can I just, we'll go roll call.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Mary Newbell?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes. We'll go on to technology purchases and looking for motion.
I move the board accept a bid from CDW for the upgrade to the MS CAD lab, twenty-two PCs in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred twelve dollars. And to accept a bid from ENH for the upgrade to elementary gym audio in the amount to six thousand one hundred three dollars and ninety-five cents. And to accept a bid from ENH for the upgrade, the elementary gym video system in the amount of nine thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second. Jim White, any questions or comments?
So the AMS CAD lab upgrade, they say there was no bid received for this PCM dash gym. What is that? Mark's not here.
Yeah.
Is that an important component?
I think Mike, Mark must have sent out bid request to these three, four vendors.
Oh, so that's a win, then there's not some component or something?
Correct.
Okay.
Tim, you'd be a hundred percent right because there was four vendors that he did send out the stuff for that he mentioned at the last meeting. Yep, this one did not.
Did not, oh.
Supplied, but.
Okay.
Going forward, do we know how often we're going to have to do these upgrades?
Not offhand, but I do know that Mark is working on what we call a hardware. What's the word I'm looking for? Plan of action, schedule, thank you, so that we can stay current and have some that do not resuscitate. I know with consolidation, we're doing that already. If there are desktops or whatever that are not, it doesn't make sense to service them. We won't be moving them to the new schools.
Okay, you're going to send those to Africa, do you?
I'd say clearly take them, I would. I don't want to say well. Right.
Jessica. What's the video upgrade?
They're trying to do something with a big assembly area that's uniform between the three buildings. So that they can have a wire child CD screen and have adequate sound in whether it's playing videos or connecting to the internet and having a virtual tour or presentation in all three sites would be having the same equipment.
How large is large? Does it like settle?
It is a venture.
It was like a hundred thirty-three inches or so.
It'd be nice because he did point out that they could play the same thing in all three schools. So it's. Sit in her office and then you're gone.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And we'll do a roll call.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Mary Newbell?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes. We'll move on to I retaining wall project at the MS.
I move the board accept the bid from TSA Concreto in the amount of thirty-seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars for the retaining wall project at the MS.
Second. And any questions or comments? I forget what this is, Jake. This is different than the wall you were talking about earlier?
Nope, this is the wall. It's along eighth and Clermont to follow the sidewalk so that we can bring that grass area level. So we have a suitable playground area for kids.
Any other questions?
So this part wasn't paid for by the grant fund?
No, no.
The fence, like.
The fence that sits on top is, yep.
Okay, we will roll call.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Mary Newbell?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Mike, Andy Mary?
Yes. And we'll go on to J home wall. Yes.
I move the board accept the quote from Extreme Poles LLC for a new pole vault pit in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Second. Okay. Any questions? Comments? So is the rest of this money just coming from?
This one.
Okay, I see. Those things end in T, okay. Okay. Just out of curiosity, why are we getting smaller?
Is there a difference in the size? One was twenty-eight inches, one was thirty?
Had to do with storage. Tom just felt this one better fit storage that we had in the athletic shed. They know that when they stack them on top of one another, the compress over, you know, six months that they're not being used or longer. And that's really what shortchanged the last one ahead. So he was recommending to build the less expensive one.
Okay.
Plus we got three, three poles out of the deal too.
Okay, anything else? Then we can have a roll call.
Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Noel Deed?
Yes.
Mary Newbell?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balser?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes. And we'll go up to K overnight trips. For motion.
I move the board approve the following overnight trips. Boys track and field state competition at St. Louis, Wisconsin, May thirtieth to June first. High school golf sectionals at New Richmond on May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. AHS yearbook members going to yearbook camp at Carroll University of Washington, July sixteenth to eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. And the FFA students going to Washington DC for placement conference, May twenty-fourth to twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. And state convention in Madison, June tenth to thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Question on that?
Yeah, was it June, September, June?
Well, it says June zero, June thirteenth, but when I looked it up, the, the meeting starts on Tuesday, so I don't know why it'd go on Sunday. The meeting starts every Tuesday if you click on the schedule. It's Tuesday through Friday, so they don't give the dates. They only say that it starts on Tuesday through, Tuesday evening through Saturday.
Okay. I think you're right. Where are they going to tour for a couple of them?
Madison. And then the second thing that I have is on the.
The DC national.
On the DC, if this was May twenty-fourth to twenty-ninth, why is it coming to us after the fact? Why was this not sought approval at last month's meeting?
Which one?
The May twenty-fourth to twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Today is the twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, so. That should have been.
I think that's the wrong one.
Okay. For FFA? No, it's not. It was just late.
They're there right now or just with it?
Yeah, that came late from Tom Schofield, from FFA. And I think that she didn't have the arrangements until last minute.
But then the date's on there also shows twenty-second to the twenty-ninth. If you click on the attachment, it says twenty-second to twenty-ninth. But I would ask for that to come to the board for a moment because we are responsible and that's all.
So with Neola, that's when it became a requirement that the board overproved overnight trips. But we have not caught up to that new policy yet. So there have been a few times in months past where Tom Schofield would let me know what Mike know because we didn't have time to go to the board. Now golf left today, and so I intentionally let that one go. I missed the others that you're referencing. We will try to do better. I think part of it is communicating with coaches and advisors to.
At least, you know, if it's in the meeting, if there's, plus for time, at least getting a email vote from the board members.
To let.
Because you have a crucial responsibility for the students.
Okay. So the first one where there's a zero there, that should say June tenth, because I'm actually invited to present on the twelfth. And so I believe they leave on the tenth, even though the schedule doesn't have dates on it. So that was probably my intention. I just put the table. Okay.
And they're only coming back after two days. They're not staying for the whole time. Because this goes through Saturday, which would make it the.
Don't have to check out, check that out.
Well, I think what you're looking at is the national one rather than the state one.
Because that's what's coming on the.
Yeah, I think, I think the one that you're looking at, the one that says twenty nineteen Wisconsin WLC travel summary. I believe the way that that, if you read it, it's the first night they're staying in Streetsburg, Ohio, then they're going to hit Washington DC. So that travel one should be all the way through. Now that's just the one that's a single sheet.
And it's the May twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth?
The other one I think you're, the other one you're looking at, it's got the FFA, it's in color. It says twenty nineteen.
So both, are both of them from the Madison?
Both of them appear to be, to me, to be of a national convention rather than state. I don't think we have a breakdown of the state convention.
So it's only three days.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay.
I just wondered if that would go.
So we had a motion. Did we have a second, Bobby?
Yes.
Just, do you want to have a second?
Twelve second.
I'm sorry.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And then all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes, and we'll go on to hires.
I move the board approve the new hires as presented. Kelsey Betcher, Special Ed Teacher at East. Ashley Grohl, Special, or Elementary Teacher at East. Jeffrey Newfeld, Team Teacher. Andrew Nordgren, Special Ed Teacher at AHS. Anne Nowinski, Early Childhood Cross-Catagorical. Melissa Pregring, Special Ed Teacher at North. Adam Streeter, Special Ed Teacher at West. And Rachel Tassler, Principal at West. And Virginia Voman, Assistant to the Director of Pupillant Services.
Okay, any, any questions or comments, anything to add?
Yeah, I was wondering, would, would you kind of change the format of the new hires?
Instead of seeing like the resume or then?
Yeah, it wasn't really a resume, was it?
Did it take an interview? But it's nice to enroll salaries.
That was on there though.
Stand in the motion.
Yeah, that's been a while since we had that.
Did you like seeing that?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of gives some background on the new hires.
Yeah, told us where they went to school, how many years of experience they had.
The interview came in, involved the hiring.
So are they possibly going to begin in the future?
Yes. So college.
Well, I think they were just a standard sheet, one sheet. They told us.
Like the staffing update? Is that what you mean?
It was definitely, it was a one sheet thing.
I don't recall it since I've been.
No, it's not been here. She wasn't here when Colleen was here, so you have to go back.
It was, it was a single page form that had the hires name listed on it, where they went to school, what salary range was, who the, did the interview, et cetera. It was just a little more background information.
You recall that, Tim?
Yeah, and then something like the number of applicants.
Yeah. Have we not had that for a whole year?
I'm sure we've not had any hire act from that.
So it's just a little more information. So we can do something. Okay. Any other questions or comments? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, and we'll go on to M resignations.
I move the board accept the following resignations. Manana Burkey, Elementary Teacher at Pleasant View. Jason Lammer, Elementary Teacher at East. Catherine Clenchman, Elementary Teacher at Spring Valley. Dan Ripman, Elementary Physical Education Teacher. And Amber Fresh, Assistant Director of Pupillant Services. Retirements include Alori Flannery, Teacher at AMS. Sandra Gallagher, Teacher at Presswood. Scott Anderson, Teacher at Pleasant View. Debbie Comster, Teacher at Pleasant View. Rebonne Uford, Laboratory Clerk at AMS. Jeff Newfeld, Resignation of Administrative Position. All effective by the end of the school year with the exception of Amber Fresh effective May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments?
Mr. Henderson was my fourth grade teacher. He was great. Said he'd see you go.
Okay, anything else?
Sorry, go ahead. Is it, so now we're going to have to post a lot of positions?
I wouldn't say a lot, although it is still many. I think last check, we had three or four elementary teaching positions. We filled a few in Special Ed. Do you have any open right now? Any special ed teaching? No. So. I, so we're filling out your position now. The technology teacher is still open without applicants. I know we made an offer to abandon applicant, so waiting to see who can finalize that.
But with the consolidation, or have some of these positions have been observed?
Yes.
So it's not, that's made up.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go on to M donations.
I move the board accept the following donations. Craig and Ricky, one hundred dollars for the Naboka Environmental Center. The Rocket Club of Antigo, twenty fifty dollars for the Naboka Environmental Center. Trailway Construction, fifty dollars for AHS Engineering Design Class Electric Card Competition. Fuller Sales and Service, hundred dollars for the AHS Engineering Design Class Electric Card Competition. I tried for two thousand five hundred dollars for the Splash and Dash Swim Club. Parcels of Antigo, one thousand dollars for the Naboka Environmental Center. Landre Four, three hundred dollars for the AHS Engineering Design Class Electric Card Competition. Class of nineteen sixty-eight, five hundred dollars for the Naboka Environmental Center. Northwood Association of Realtors, five hundred dollars for Killer Backpack, Killer Need Program. Main Attraction, hundred dollars for the Drama Playbill donations. Mark Keach and Laura Walwogel, hundred dollars for the Drama Playbill donations. Antigo Grid Island Club, five hundred dollars for the AHS weight room. Richard Dufour and Sherry Freiter, two four, hundred dollars for Special Olympics. Ra and Nancy Blood, one thousand dollars for the AHS Drama Club. Ra and Nancy Blood, two hundred dollars for the Naboka Environmental Center. Ra and Nancy Blood, two hundred dollars for the Antigo Red Robin Shooting Sport Trap Club. Ra and Nancy Blood, hundred dollars for the Faberab donation. Gina Haas Foundation, two thousand dollars for the Gina Haas Scholarship. Current Explained Unit, one hundred and fifty dollars for the AHS Engineering Design Class Electric Card Competition. For a total of nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second. Jessica. Thank all those who donated. Any other comments, questions? And all those in favor? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll go on to O, is it confirmed the next meeting for June 25th? That's okay with everybody, guys? Uh, okay, they have all some good ground?
Second.
Okay, Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.